The County Board of Education to order. Welcome to our meeting, and I'd like to recognize a few guests. I see Margaret Murchison. Glad you're here. Will Doran from the Herald. Emily Grimes, who looks after our military children. Welcome to our meeting. At this point, please join me in a moment of silence as we reflect on today's activities. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, I'll open the floor for public comments. Lauren McCormack. It'll get to you too quickly.
Good evening, everyone. Is this on? Okay, great. My name is Dr. Lauren McCormack, and I'm a member of the AIG Advisory Committee here in Lee County. And I'm also a member of the PAGE Group, which stands for Partners for Advancement of Gifted Education. I also happen to be the mom of two kids, one in middle school and one in elementary school. So, the updated AIG plan is one of the agenda items for you all tonight, so I wanted to come here and talk to you about, a little bit about that. First of all, I wanted to acknowledge the hard work by Dr. Warren and Karen Foshee-Cameron and others who have spent a lot of their time putting the updated plan together, so I would like to commend them, everyone, for that. I think we've made a lot of good progress in putting a new plan together, and I think it's going to help strengthen the AIG program. So, I'd like to point out a few areas in the plan and the program that I think we need to continue to work on and strengthen as we collaborate in this endeavor. Several of the suggestions that I'll offer are drawn from the surveys that our advisory committee put together, and then were administered and the data were collected. These are surveys to the teachers, and to the parents, and also of the students, and we got some good responses. So first, we have made good progress in getting the plan done, and we also have made good progress last year. At this time, you all passed the new AIG identification criteria, so that's a lot more clear. So with that under our belt, I think it's helpful for us to turn our attention to curriculum development, in particular aligning the AIG curriculum with the Common Core, now that the Common Core is in place, because that is a requirement and important for us to focus on. I think it'd be very beneficial for all those involved in curriculum development and planning to take a look at the survey results, including some of the write-in comments, because they're helpful in revealing some of the areas that we need to focus on and continue to work on with respect to curriculum. Second, I think it's commendable that 84 teachers have now undergone the training here, 45 hours of training, to get their AIG certificate. I think we need to train the rest of the teachers, because all of the teachers who are now responsible within the classroom for teaching AIG to our children have not been trained. So, fewer have been trained than haven't been. So that's a job that we need to focus on. Staff development is so critical, because the learning needs of this population are really unique. They have certain social and emotional needs, some of them are pretty sensitive, so without training, teachers are not going to be able to know how to deal with that. High school teachers, you'll see in the survey results, are in particular asking for training in a few areas, including differentiation and dealing with certain sub-populations within the AIG. I think we also need to train our principals and other administrators, because they are responsible for overseeing the implementation of this program, and if they do not have that background in AIG, then they're not going to be able to support the teachers in doing so. Third, I think the strongest finding from the survey data is the need for more communication. Both parents and teachers are asking for more communication about how the program is working and what services their child is supposed to be getting, and parents, I think, would like to contribute and give input, but they need to know how that communication works. So one of the things we'll be doing, which is great in the plan, there are every school this year, there will be a communication session for parents before school starts, and these will be different from the parent nights. This is specifically focused on AIG, so that's good progress. We need to widely disseminate information about that to parents. And finally, the plan calls for a program monitoring using a variety of sources of data, including EVA's data. EVA's is an important source of information for monitoring student performance, and really needs to be used when examining this program, so we can understand whether we're meeting the needs of this population or not. Some of the students in their surveys were asking for more challenging work, greater rigor, more hands-on learning, and not just additional work. The K-3 students is where I really think we need to put our attention. For those of us who had a child who went through the program before, four years ago or more, we can, we know the difference of what the K-3 kids are not getting now from what they used to get, so I ask that you really take a look at the K-3 services and what they're, what's happening now, so that we can focus on those nurturing component. That is the foundation for helping these kids learn when you get them young, before it becomes not so cool to be smart. So with that said, we now have a plan. I think we need a timeline for implementing it. The plan does not have a timeline, so if we set a timeline, then we'll know whether we're achieving our goals and how, if we're defining, you know, how we're defining success and if we're making it successful. And for transparency, I'd also like to suggest that we share a summary, a narrative summary, a little bit more than just some PowerPoint highlights, but actual one-page summary or so, with the teachers and parents, since they took the time to answer the surveys, I think that would be important to feed the results back to them, so that we can get them to comply next time we ask them for a survey. So maybe that can be posted on the website or something. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. McCormack. And I'd now like to share with the, with the board and the audience, the Lee County vision. Lee County Schools, in partnership with the community, will provide challenging learning experience for students in a safe and supportive environment. We are committed to academic excellence, social responsibility, and lifelong learning. Our success will be demonstrated by the achievement of our students and their positive participation in society. The code of ethics that applies to board members is as follows: We must avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of a conflict of interest as we handle the work of the board. We must avoid the solicitation and/or acceptance of gifts in return for advice or assistance on matters concerning the operation of the business of the board. We must avoid the misuse of public funds. We must avoid misrepresentation or falsification of facts, and avoid making confidential information Before I ask for a motion to approve the agenda, I would like to amend the agenda in the following fashion. I would like to add an item four to New Business, and this will speak to Senate Bill 236 that's currently in the Senate. So is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
I make a motion that we amend the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. At this point, is there a motion to approve the minutes of May 14th, May 20th, May 23rd, and June 3rd, 2013?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of 5:14, 13, 13, 5:20, 13, 5:23, 13, and 6:03, 13.
And is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and approved. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Under announcements, I do have several. Please be advised that there will be a retirement reception for Dr. Moss on June 13th, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at the Flame Restaurant. If it'll turn, it may be a toast and it may be a roast. We will open that as it occurs. Please note, there's a call board meeting on June 27th at 5:00 PM, second floor of the conference room, HEB, and that's to close out the current fiscal year budget. On July 9th at 5:00 PM, there will be a ceremony to swear in the new superintendent, Dr. Bryan, and that will precede our meeting, which will convene at 6:00 as usual. At this point, it gives me great pleasure to introduce Dr. Jim Simeon, who is President of the Sandhills Regional Education Consortium for a presentation. Welcome, Jim.
Thank you, Chairman Smith and other board members. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you this evening for a special honor and opportunity for me to recognize one of your own, and in doing so, recognizing Dr. Jeff Moss, who on May 10th of this year was selected unanimously by his peers of this region as our Superintendent of the Year. And Dr. Moss was selected for many reasons, and listening just now to your vision of your school system for Lee County, our, his peers, as they spoke on his behalf, spoke of items that exemplified that vision that you have so recently read to the audience. Also, they were very quick to say that through Dr. Moss's leadership in technology, in STEM efforts, and throughout his efforts to lead Lee County schools, he has been an example for them, and one that many of them said continually, that they called on for advice, called on for leadership, and knew that when they talked to Jeff, they were getting good information. And that's a, you know, an indication to me and to others of a true leader, when others look to him for advice when they're in a tough situation. And I know y'all don't realize it, but every now and then a superintendent does get in a sort of a tough situation, and they were very quick to say that they called on Jeff. With that said, I would like to present this plaque to Jeff, if he can come this way, please. The plaque reads, "Sandhills Regional Education Consortium honors Dr. Jeffrey C. Moss of Lee County Schools Regional Superintendent for the year 2014 for outstanding leadership in public education, in working with children, and in working for his community." The selection of Jeff was made on May the 10th, 2013. It is with a great deal of honor and pride that I present this plaque to Jeff, and I hope you, and I know you will, join me in congratulating Jeff for this honor. Thank you, Chairman Smith. I appreciate it. If you will excuse me, I've got the opportunity to go to another board meeting, which I'm sitting on that side of the table down in Southern Pines.
Thank you, thank you for taking the time to be here, and good luck with your meeting with the City Council in Southern Pines. At this, at this point, we can proceed with the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's my pleasure tonight to recognize our Clean School winner, and I'm doing that because Dr. Jim Atkinson is not with us tonight, and please keep his father in your prayers. He, Jim has been working with his father in a very delicate situation, and he was called out Monday this weekend, and he's still with his father. But coming in at fourth was Lee County High School with a score of 94. We had three schools that tied in third with 96, Warren Williams, Tramway, and Greenwood; three that tied for second with a score of 97, Broadway, Deep River, and San Lee. And our first-place winner for this month with a score of 98 is Floyd Knight. And representing Floyd Knight is Michael Holt and Harry Sellers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very difficult job to keep it clean, and along with the card, you didn't get the sign.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you for what you do for our schools, and equally important, thank you for what you do with our children.
Mr. Chairman, the members of the board, we still do not have, we're closer, but we still do not have a budget from the state. The House has a budget that will most likely be approved this week. And looking at the side-by-side comparisons, there are some similarities, and there are some differences. And obviously, what they will do over the weekend is assign conferees that will work out the differences. I would expect, since it is this early in June, that we possibly could see a state budget by the end of the month. It should not take the conferees that long to work out the differences. We do not have a local budget, and if, I believe I read in the paper today that they were planning on approving one June 28th. I believe that was the date. But I was surprised today when I received a letter from the county manager. As you know, seven days ago, we had a two-hour joint meeting. Dr. Lynn Smith, Ms. Tamara Brogan, and Mr. Cameron Sharp was there. Mr. Sharp was pulled away for work-related responsibilities, and was only able to be there for about half of the time. But during that time, we answered all the questions that they asked, and we even probed and asked if there were anything else they wanted to know. And at that point, they said no, they were completely satisfied. Today, I did receive a letter from John Crumpton that the commissioners are requesting quite a bit more financial data. They're giving us three days in which to respond, which has a little similarity to what happened a couple of years ago, when we spent about 145 hours as we were still trying to close out our fiscal year, at the same time trying to provide information to them. So we have to stop the presses, so to speak, even though you should not stop the presses this late in June, to try to close out the fiscal year, to try to address the county's demand. It was just a little surprising, since we had just spent a couple of hours with them, unless the board members left with a different impression. I left with the impression that we had answered all the questions that they had. Senate Bill 236 is on your calendar for later on, so I won't spend much time other than tell you that it's in a House committee. I believe it's in Rules. And then House Bill 491, which concerns school resource officers, is, I believe, in the Rules Committee on the Senate side. There's one other piece of legislation that I wanted to bring up. I received an email this afternoon concerning handguns on educational property. This is House Bill 937. It is in the Senate. It is in Senate Judiciary One Committee, Mr. Love. I believe there must be more than one Senate Judiciary Committee. They have amended that House bill. It initially stated that concealed carry was going to be allowed on higher institutions only. They've rewritten it to include public schools, which would then allow concealed carry weapons on public school property. It will probably be voted on tomorrow. That is a concern of mine. We try diligently to ensure there are no weapons on campus, instead of introducing weapons on campus. I think the introduction of weapons on campus can be a logistical problem. But you may hear about House Bill 937 that is in the Senate Judiciary Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I got one question. I mean, not Mr. Chairman, Dr. Moss.
Yes, sir.
I'm just curious what the committee, just briefly, what are they asking for?
They're asking for all funds, local, state, and federal funds, from our entire budget from last year and for the upcoming year, which we don't have budgets for the upcoming year, because they haven't approved a budget, and now there has a state, or the Congress. As you know, Congress hasn't approved a budget in about five years. From all sources, all funding sources, so I interpret that to be everything.
So just more of the same from about a year ago?
It, it, it has that flavor, Mr. Sharp.
What impact would that have on their decision? Did they tell you?
I don't, no, they did not tell me, and it's not spelled out in the letter. They can ask for it under 115(c)(429), and they did two years ago, but my understanding two years ago is I don't believe anyone ever looked at anything we sent over. I asked that question before, and they said it sat in a room, so I'm not, I'm not sure, Mr. Atkinosha.
Because this is going to be an extra work. Did they pinpoint something in the one we submitted that they don't like, or what was...
Now, they do speak about technology in here, that they want to know who we've hired, how much we pay them, how much we've spent, everything and anything centering around technology, including the wireless network and our engineer staff, and what it takes to keep our network up and operational. I don't think it's a secret that they, I don't believe, support the technology initiative, the digital learning in the school system.
I don't think it's a secret that they don't necessarily support public education.
Are there any further comments or questions?
And then, Mr. Chairman, I just have one other item. Since this is my last board meeting, I would like to take this opportunity to thank the citizens of Lee County, the parents, the community leaders, everyone that I've come involved with. It's truly been an experience unlike any I had ever thought I would have in my career. It has been a family, it's felt like a family. Have had wonderful support. I've enjoyed going on Margaret Murchison's radio show. She is so wonderful to work with and such a beautiful person. The relationship with the Sanford Herald has been great. You may not like everything they report, but they report what they see, or what they believe they see. NITs will a little bit, but, but even though they've had a little bit of a revolving door with reporters, I think Will's been with us about as long as anyone else has, and he's done a great job. And Emily does a wonderful job looking after our military families. The staff, the administrators in this county are second to none. You could take that group of individuals anywhere in the nation and turn a school around, or take a school to heights that it could only dream of achieving. They're a group of folks that I would not have a bit of problem putting my children, my grandchildren, or any child that was related to me in any of their classrooms or under any of their care. They truly have what it means to, they know what it means to protect children and to, and to educate children. Our other staff members, our custodians, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, do an outstanding job. It's great to talk to them when I walk through the buildings. They also care about our kids, and care about them each and every day, and treat them as though they're their own kids. And you don't see that in many organizations. This is truly, truly an organization that anyone would want to be associated with. And last but not least, the board. We cannot have accomplished anything without your support, the seven of you that are here now, the seven that were here when I arrived four and a half years ago. Without your support, we would not be where we are today. Our children would not be achieving at the levels they're achieving without each one of you and what you've accomplished, what you've attributed, and your time. And I know the bullets you've taken as well, for a lot of the decisions we've made, but you've held true, and you've held true to what you believe is right for kids, and I sincerely hope you continue to do that. And also, on a personal note, Susan Britt has been exceptional. In my 30 years, could not find another person like her, and you don't, I think, sometimes realize the jewel you have in her. But thank you for the best four and a half years of my career. It's, it's been so enjoyable. This has been the most difficult decision I've ever made, and I wish you well in the future, and hope to read about you in the Herald and hear about you on Margaret's radio show. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to comment on two issues here. Will, I do recall that in last Sunday's paper, we even got a thumbs up for our cooperation with the commissioners and our...
I can't agree with that outright.
Well, you could pass that along. The point is, you know, we got a thumbs up for our cooperation and being there and being polite and presenting whatever information was available, and then we kind of get blindsided with this. It's kind of disappointing. Insofar as Dr. Moss is leaving, I have to reflect a little bit on five years ago, and I think Mr. Sharp and I both asked Dr. Moss, "How are you going to go about improving our graduation rate?" And we asked him about the achievement gap. I think we both asked that question, didn't we? You know, I don't remember his answer, but looking back on it, he's solved both those issues, and I think he solved it primarily by raising expectations. That's the key word in five years that Dr. Moss is here. If you, the more you expect, the more you're going to get, and that goes for parents, children, students, faculty, everybody in this system, and he has raised expectations beyond my expectations. Certainly, his interest in and support of technology is just unprecedented. Just last week, the president was in Mooresville City, Mooresville City School, right, commending them for what they've done with their technology, and I think we have paralleled everything that's gone on there. In addition, he challenged educators generally to involve children's learning and use of the Internet. And Cindy Johnson, where's Cindy? I saw her come in. Cindy's back there. I had a long conversation yesterday with Cindy about a program called DTS, right? Digital Transmission Systems? And it's a program that's already in place at Eastleigh Middle School and Wesley Middle School, in which students are being sent home educational material via the Internet. So not only are we paralleling Mooresville City School, we are in advance of the president's expectations, and next year, that program will be extended to everybody in our school system, all of our students. And we have Dr. Moss's leadership in taking us to this point, and I think we, as a board, owe him a round of applause for his five years of service. We can now continue with committee reports. Curriculum instruction, Linda Smith, please.
All right. Mr. Chairman, the Elementary CNI met May 15th at Tramway Elementary, and at that time, Dr. Lynn Warren gave an overview of Title III Plan and the AIG Updated Plan, and tonight you will find that under New Business. Dr. Bryan reported on the seminar class that originated from the Superintendent's Council on Economic Competitiveness. Mrs. Tamara Brogan updated the committee on her recent visit to the legislature to hear discussion on Senate Bill 236 and Senate Bill 674. She also briefed the committee on the ongoing research on our choice program for Lee County Schools. And Dr. Carol Chapel spoke to the committee about the progress of Common Core, and she informed the committee about the upcoming summer training on Common Core. And Dr. Lynn Smith presented a snapshot of his discussion with the Education Committee at the legislature, and he told the committee members that the amendment presented would take school resource officers from the school site and place them under the Sheriff Department. would take school resource officers from the school site and place them under the Sheriff Department. And Lee County schools would have to fire all resource officers. He may mention that he felt Representative Stone did a disservice to our children by compromising the security of our children at each school. And then, on June the fifth, the high school CNI had a call meeting. And my thanks to my board member, Mr. Sharp, and also, well, Mrs. Brogan chaired the committee in my absence. And so, that's the end of all of our CNI meetings for the year.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Facilities and Technology, Mr. Bonardi.
Mr. Chairman, Facilities and Technology Committee met on May twenty-eighth and discussed several items. A couple are before us tonight under consent agenda. The Maintenance Department parking lot bids and the installation of boiler at Jaglen Edwards. And we also received an update, and as you've already shared, on the DTS project that's currently ongoing at Eastleigh Middle School and Wesley Middle School, along with an update on the Lenovo tablets. And our next meeting is scheduled on for June the eighteenth.
Finance, Mr. Akonosha.
I guess from the report of the superintendent about the request, the work for the finance committee is not completely done yet. So I don't think we have anything to report, but I wish at this time the Board of Commissioners already have something in their mind they want to give to the school board. A lot of times when the discussion is going on, the discussion looks like we get all of our funding from the Board of Commissioners. What percentage do we get? Can you tell the everybody?
Probably, Tammy, about fifteen percent, about fifteen percent from local and eighty-five from federal and state.
But we have gone through a lot of difficult times just to satisfy the fifteen percent people a lot. And all of us on the Board of Education are taxpayers. Nobody here, I'm a businessperson, I'm a minister. Nobody here is colluding or supporting anything that is not good for our children. And I think the best asset that any of us can invest in, not your house, not your car, the best asset is our children. And I feel like if you invest on your children, it will last you a lifetime. Your house can get old and can be flooded and things can happen to it. But if you give your children good training, it will help. So I say all of these to say this, that I hope the Board of Commissioners don't delay us in making appropriate planning for our children for the next fiscal year.
Thank you, Mr. Akonosha. Policy, Mr. Sharp.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since our last meeting, we have not had a policy committee meeting. And our next meeting is set for next Tuesday, five o'clock.
The next item is our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, as is.
We got it. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The consent agenda is approved. We can now move into unfinished business. Mr. Sharp?
Yes, we have twenty-one policies on for second reading today. And I just moved that the Lee County Board of Education approved a second reading of the following policies. Thirteen ten slash four thousand two, seventeen forty slash forty ten, three thousand thirty-one hundred, thirty-one fifteen, thirty-one twenty, thirty-two hundred, thirty-four ten, thirty-four twenty, thirty-four sixty, thirty-five ten, forty-one thirty-five, forty-four hundred, sixty-four, thirty slash eighty-seven thirty, seventy-one hundred, seventy-one thirty, seventy-two forty, seventy-four thirty, seventy-five twenty, seventy-eight ten, and ninety-two hundred.
And since this is coming from committee, it does not need a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The policies are adopted. We can now proceed with New Business, and the first item in New Business is the trustee to the Central Carolina Community College. And I'll recognize the committee for a recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, the Ad-Hoc Committee, Mr. Cameron Sharp and myself, we met. And so, tonight, we are presenting two names. One is Ophelia Livingston, who, this is her position that we're looking at tonight. And also, Mr. Chip Post for the second position, for the position of trustee. And so, I would like to offer the name of Mrs. Ophelia Livingston as an appointee, as a CCC trustee appointee.
Is there a second?
Second.
And before we vote, let me read this. The Lee County Board of Education, by general statute, appoints four members to the Central Carolina Community Board of Trustees. The four, present four appointees are currently Ophelia Livingston, whose term ends June thirtieth, two thousand thirteen, Chet Mann, term ends June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, Tony Lett, term ends June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen, and Jan Hayes, whose term ends on June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen. Mrs. Livingston's term expires June thirtieth, two thousand thirteen. The motion has been made and seconded.
That was just made as a recommendation. That's my recommendation. I didn't know if you had one.
Does the committee?
I have a recommendation as well.
Okay, proceed.
Mr. Chip Post, and it looks like we're just going to have to call a vote on each one of them.
So the committee could not come up with one recommendation, so in that case, I will entertain a motion from the board?
I make a motion that we approve Chip Post for our CCC trustee.
Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I, um, I served with Miss Livingston briefly as trustee. And from my perspective, you know, she's served, she served well during that time. And I just wondered if there's any reason that she might not be considered to retain that seat?
No, none.
None?
No. She has done well. She has worked well with Dr. Mashad, and she has represented the trustee board at the county commissioners' meeting. As you all know, Mrs. Livingston has her own business, and she has done well in this whole thing of risk management. And so, there is no reason.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, the motion, as I understand it, is to appoint Mr. Chip Post to the term that Mrs. Livingston is expiring.
That's my motion.
That's my motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Five to two.
Five to two.
Is what I count. So the nomination from this board to serve on the Central Carolina Community College Board of Trustees will be Mr. Chip Post. The next item on the agenda is the Board of Education for Calendar Events for two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. Is there a motion to approve this calendar of events?
I make a motion that we approve the calendar for two thousand thirteen, fourteen, Board of Education calendar events.
And is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or questions for Dr. Moss concerning our next year's schedule? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The ayes have it. The motion carries. The next item on here is Lee County High School Carpentry Project House. And I'm going to give the floor to Mr. Love to discuss our options on this, on the house.
Mr. Chairman, on that particular house, there was no bidders, or no one came and offered any price before that, when it was offered at public auction. And I've drawn a resolution, in order to expedite the matter, I've drawn a resolution, which I think you have before you tonight. I'm not sure which would authorize the superintendent or his designee to sell this property for the highest, best price. And the resolution also gives them an option of how they have to proceed, whether to do it by public auction or negotiations with the parties, or however they see fit, but that they need to expedite the disposal of this property.
Mrs. Britt, I seem to have missed... Good. I can't even remember that far. And Mr. Bonardi will read this resolution before we consider it.
Pursuant to a resolution adopted on April ninth, two thousand thirteen, the board ordered the sale of the Lee County High School CTE Project House by public auction. After public notice and advertisement, the property was offered for sale by public auction on June first, two thousand thirteen. At the public sale, no bids or offers of purchase were received. Now, therefore, subject to approval by the board, the superintendent or his designee is authorized and directed to dispose of said property in such a manner as will bring the highest purchase price. Further, the superintendent or his designee may use any one of the available methods of sale as follows: public auction, private negotiations and sale, advertisement for sealed bids, and negotiated offer, advertisement and upset bid.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I make a motion that we approve the resolution.
And is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the resolution? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The ayes have it. The resolution is approved. The fourth and final issue under New Business concerns Senate Bill 236, which speaks to school ownership, and I'd like to recognize Mrs. Brogan for a motion.
I move that the Board of Education go on record as opposing Senate Bill 236 and instruct the chair to write a letter on behalf of the board in opposition to this legislation and send the letter to our legislative delegation and other members of the General Assembly.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I would, Mr. Chairman, like to discuss about this. Thank you. And I'm going to ask on Dr. Moss to help me with the history of this bill, because I know that he's been watching it as well. Senator Rabin co-sponsored this bill, and it was filed on March seventh, two thousand thirteen. I know that it's quite lengthy about everything that's involved in it, but it does give authority for county commissioners, if they want to, by resolution, to assume responsibility for construction improvement, ownership, and acquisition of public school property. And I believe it takes the funding. Is that, is, we want to add on to that, Dr. Moss, about funding?
Well, it does not speak to funding, but obviously, if a Board of Commissioners in the counties identified, elected to take on all aspects, then it would include the funding that a local government provides for custodial services. Local funding is not set up that way. It's not for an item specific. So what I believe a group of commissioners would need to do would be to cut your local funding the equivalent of what they believe they're taking over from you.
Thank you. I remember, I have spoken with Senator Rabin about this on one of my trips up to Raleigh. It was a good, long conversation, and I was very adamantly opposed to this legislation. And I explained to him my reasons why, which I will briefly cover in a second. And I felt that, you know, I definitely left an impression on him that I was against this bill and all the reasons for it. I also went up to the Senate Education Committee, which Senator Rabin is a part of that committee, when it was being heard that day. It was a Wednesday, beginning of May. And I went up there to listen and participate in that committee activity. I remember that day that there were many school boards that were there as well, because this bill is a local bill that covers ten counties, and Lee County is one of the counties in the bill. There was some other school board members, as I said, that were all there in opposition to this bill. And there were a few that had talked against it during the committee hearing. But needless to say, it did pass the committee, and it was a voice vote. It was very close, but it did pass and went through the House. I mean, sorry, through the Senate. It is now in the House. And since May twentieth, it's been in the House, and it's on the Committee of Rules, Calendar, and Operations of the House. And it's sitting in committee right now. My concerns about this bill, I am really concerned. One of the comments that kept coming up during the committee, and something that some of the legislators have keep bringing up, is that, you know, they're going, it's going to help alleviate a burden from us as school board members. And that really gets me upset, that they keep using that term, and this is why. As a Board of Education member, to me, it is not a burden to take care of our buildings and our, and our land and all the facilities that we own. That is part of our education process for our children. It is part of our responsibility. It's part of my job, and that's how I look at it. We all up here were elected by the citizens of Lee County to take care of our school system. And our buildings, facilities, and grounds are part of that. And everybody knows that you want your children to be in a good environment to learn. They need to be in a good environment. And then, we would take good care of those buildings because it's a priority for us. We deal with education every day. We watch it closely. It's everything that we do. So for us, our buildings are going to be a priority. And so, when they keep talking about burden, that's why it's so upsetting to me. Because to me, as a Board of Education member, I am driven to do what's best for our children. And that is part of doing what's best for our children, is to provide them with a good grounds, a good buildings to learn in. And it's upsetting to me. It's insultive to me that they keep saying that they think it's a burden for me. No, it's not a burden. I ran to take care of our school system. That's why I'm here. That's part of my job. And like I said, it's part, the environment's part of the process, and it's part of our education system. And I also want to bring up a few other points. You know, we, as a board, have statutory vested control and supervisor powers for our buildings and for our system. And student achievement and behavior are tied to the building conditions. I remember when my oldest son was going into Lee Senior before the renovations. There was a lot of work that needed to be done here, and I heard about a lot of the children complaining about the conditions of the buildings at that time. And I do think it affected the learning process for them. You know, the renovations have happened. I'm so glad that they did. And I think it really helps boost morale for our children, is providing them a great environment to learn in. So that's just my own personal experience with that as well. Another thing that concerns me about this bill is the liability. When you start looking at, you know, how are we going to decide who's in charge of, you know, if there's an accident at one of the facilities, how are we going to break down the maintenance? How are we going to break all of that down so that there's no confusion? I could see this really opening up a can of worms, where it's going to cause a lot of confusion between the commissioners and the Board of Education on who's in control of what and who takes care of what. I do remember that there were some amendments I heard to this bill that would take away, and Dr. Moss, you might want to help me on this, take away. Originally, the bill was to encompass not just the buildings, but everything inside them. And I believe they took out the internal components of it, so it's not everything inside. Am I correct on that?
It actually ended up being a menu of items that the commissioners can pick and choose from. So they could just take, say, school construction or site selection. They could take the maintenance of the building. They could take the custodial components. It depends on what they desire to choose. And once they make that selection, the way the bill is written, they have to assume that responsibility for a minimum of ten years.
Another, I just strongly feel that these decisions should, thank you, Dr. Moss, these decisions should be school board-driven, school board decisions. Because like I said, for us, it's a priority. We know what our needs are with our buildings. We know as we go into construction and as we take care of our buildings, what, how our needs are and how we can take care of our needs as Board of Education members, because we're dealing with education all the time. My concern about the commissioners is if they take control of our buildings for them, and it's nothing against them, but they've got so much on their plate already with the county that I'm afraid that our buildings would not be a priority for them. And would, and it would, they would fall down on the list. in that the maintenance and everything that needs to be done on these buildings would not be taken care of like we would take care of them, because for us, it's such a priority. Um, and they just don't know our needs like we know them. And one more thing I wanna, I wanna cover about this is, you know, we did not, another thing that really upsets me about this is that we did not ask for this bill. It's a local bill. We're put in this bill, and despite my discussions with Senator Raven against it, you know, we're still in this bill. We did not ask for this bill. We do not need this bill. The last couple projects that we've had, the gymnasium at Floyd Knight, the San Lee Middle School, and as well as the renovations here at Lee County High School, have gone very well. We, we don't need this bill. We're doing a good job with our construction. We're taking good care of our buildings, and we're looking out for our children. So I don't feel at all that this is needed, and it's very upsetting to me, as an elected official up here on the Board of Education, that we have these bills that we don't ask for, that are greatly gonna affect our job and how we take care of our children. And that really upsets me, having this happen against our will. Um, I would, I, I know that our last couple projects that we've done, the ones I've mentioned, the gymnasium in San Lee and Lee County High School, that we finished them early, and we came under budget, and we saved two million dollars on them. So we're, we're doing a great job. We don't need this intervention, not at all. And Mr. Bernardi, would you mind, um, saying a few comments, because you were a board member at the time that these projects were under construction, and you're on our facility committee. Would you like to say something about how those projects went?
Sure. Um, yeah, I was, uh, uh, on the board, uh, with all of these projects, and then served on Facilities, uh, Technology Committee during all, all this construction, and, and I agree, uh, Ms. Brogan, we, I, I think that, uh, uh, we've done an, an excellent job in, in, uh, being stewards of, uh, taxpayer dollars, and one of the things that's most disturbing to me, uh, about this potential leg- about this legislation, the potential, uh, is, is that in the, very early in the design process, the, the key in, in a, a construction project, uh, for schools is you have to build, you're building around the kind of programming that you want to deliver. You know, the, the, you know, the, what are you, what are you doing educationally? It needs to be the first question, you know, that, that architect asks, you know, and, and the first thing that has to be determined. And that is gonna determine as to what the facility's gonna look like. You know, even, I can remember, uh, uh, when we began the process of San Lee, you know, the design process with, uh, Jimmy Height and Height Associates, you know, we, we had meeting after meeting with different department heads, even, even, you know, the cafeteria workers and, and, you know, the, uh, the orchestra teacher, band teacher, and, um, you know, each department head. And, you know, all of that was to get their input about what are we doing educationally, and how, you know, how, um, is that gonna impact the design of the building? And see, the, these are questions that, you know, I, I don't see county commissioners even beginning to consider. Uh, um, and that, that's what is disturbing to me, is, is that, and you said it, uh, earlier, Ms. Brogan, is that, you know, we know better the needs, you know, uh, of our school system, and we know better, you know, the, the, the size and type, uh, and design of facilities that we need, far, far more so than the commissioners would. And, you know, that would, that is my concern, is, is that you would end up, you know, being stuck with facilities, maybe that, that would not fit, you know, what you're doing educationally. And, you know, that, that is gonna be a real issue.
Thank you, Mr. Bernardi.
Dr. Moss, let me ask you, who would make, you know, with this bill, who would make the, say, day-to-day, night-to-night time calls if something were to happen to our builders? Who would make that call? And would they have to hire someone, the county commissioners, to oversee that at all times, twenty-four seven?
It would all depend on which components the commissioners would choose.
Okay.
Um, eh, you know, I think the bill, uh, initially originated because of the conversations in Wake County and how Wake County was deciding where to build schools and what kind of schools to build. So there's probably more, um, thought from commissioners on that aspect of the bill than maybe taking it over for, uh, complete maintenance and custodial services. But, as you know, in Lee County, we've had some interest from the commissioners on our custodial services. So I could see where, where it could go the full, full way. Um, but if that in fact were the case, if the, if a group of commissioners under the, the bill elected to, to take over all aspects, then the county manager or someone they would hire, uh, would be the person that would receive calls when, when those, when buildings were open, when the alarms go off at two in the morning, and the, and the custodians are out there laughing because they know who gets those calls now.
[laughing]
Uh, when all those things occur, or when a student throws up in the corner of a classroom because they're too nervous to take the test that day, which should never be happening, but that does happen because of test anxiety, uh, those calls would then go to the county manager or someone that the county would hire and not to us.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just wanna, um, elaborate. Just the reason why I've ma- I've made this motion is because I feel that this bill, that it was, you know, putting, we were putting there against our will, first of all. It's not something that we desire or want or need. But also, I feel that it will greatly hu- harm our ability as a board to properly take care of our school system and our children, and that, that upsets me as a Board of Education member, because personally, I take the responsibility I have as a board member very seriously, and I work hard every day to make sure that our children are taken care of. I want what's best for our children. I want what's best for our community. And I will, I don't enjoy the thought of not being able to adequately take care of our community and our children, and I feel that this would greatly hamper our ability to do that, and that's why I asked for this motion this evening.
Is there any further discussion? The motion, Mrs. Britt, correct me if I'm wrong,
[laughing]
is, is to authorize the chairman to write a letter to Mr. Raven in particular and the General Assembly in general?
Right, and, and it's our, um, our delegation, our local delegation, which Senator Raven's a part of, in the General Assembly.
Expressing our, uh, attitude.
Opposition to this bill.
Our opposition to this bill.
I have a, I have a question before we go on.
Just more discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, who requested, who put our name, who put Lee County in it? Who put the name of Lee County in it?
I think Mr. Raven added us to the bill that was, was first originated with Wake County. I think that's the way it happened.
That's right. Mr. Raven was a co-sponsor of this bill. In fact, I have it in front of me. The sponsors were Neil Hunt, uh, Tom Appadaca, Peter Brunzletter, Ralph Hayes, Ronald Raven, Jeff Tart, and Jimmy Tu- or Tommy Tucker.
I know Mr. Raven doesn't live in this county. Who, who called Mr. Raven? Did any of you guys call Mr. Raven to request for it?
I sure didn't.
Any of you guys on the school board requested that?
Oh, no.
Because, because when you look at, when you look at situations like these, and you look at the, um, you look at the, uh, the request, if, uh, something is not broken, you don't have to fix it. And if the school system is running with what it is right now, because I have, you know, one thing that I, I want to say is that we as, um, when I ran for school board, I did not run for school board to just come here and not be able to do my work as a school, school board member. I, I was elected. I was not appointed. And I have vision. And when you have a vision of what you think your job is, and then by the time you know, if somebody say you can't do this, you can't do that, the commissioners are part timers, just like the Board of Education are part timers. We are all responsible to the, uh, to the community, just like they are. And I just feel like, uh, taking, uh, redistricting, which is a primary work of the school board from our hands, because when you're building and you don't have a control over where you build, and you don't own the property, how can you do your planning and redistricting? You can't do that. And they say it's a burden, which you concentrate on educating. Education is holistic. And I've had people tell me, there are kids around the world who are studying under, under, uh, under, uh, uh, places where there are no roofs. I said, tell me how far they have come in their education. Education is holistic, and you have to have it, and you have to have everything that will empower these children to be able to study. We're spending money on technology. We, we're spending money on things, and I feel like we, we have to look at this. I, as a person, I'm a physical, uh, I'm a, 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 a physical, uh, uh, person that believe in managing our money well, and I feel if power is about knowing how to restrain yourself, because you can do it, doesn't mean that you have to do it. Because you have the ability and the power to do it, does not mean that you just have to go ahead and do it. You have to know the restraint to say, hey, so much is given to me, and I have to be responsible in how I use the power. I say this, I know I will catch some flak around the community about it, but I say this to, to, to bring something home. It is very important that the Board of Education, uh, keep, uh, their focus on educating the children in a holistic way, not just saying, you concentrate on this. We just see, uh, Dr. McComby come to talk to us about AIG. Uh, many of us get called. People come to my business to come and talk to me. Nobody say, hey, you know what, you're not, you know, this is not the time to talk to you. I wish people come here to talk to me when I'm sitting behind this, uh, big desk. But they come to my business to take my time off to come and talk to me. So if someone is saying, yeah, you have too much on your plate, we want to take this. There are also part timers like us, and I, I want to know who is requesting this for Board of Education. Because since all of you are, are several here say you don't request it, let us know in the newspaper who requested this, so, so that we can know, the community can know who, who elected us, just like the commissioner were elected. Some of us on this board have more votes than the commissioners when we, when we run for office.
It's county-wise, not by district.
Uh, county-wide. So let us know who, who did it.
Is there, uh, [laughing] any further discussion? Uh, hearing none, uh, all those in favor of the, of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. I will prepare a letter and get it, uh, uh, delivered to the, the appropriate people. Mr. Bernardi, uh, we will now entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Lee County Board of Education go into closed session for the following purposes: to discuss information that is privileged, confidential, or not of public record under NCGS Section one four three dash three one eight point one one one, and to establish or to instruct the superintendent or his designee concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the Lee County Board of Education negotiating the price and other material terms of an agreement for the sale of surplus personal property constructed by the Lee County High School Career and Technical Education Department under NCGS Section one four three, three one eight point one one five.
The motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, is there any discussion? Hearing none, uh, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The motion carries. We're in closed session. New, uh, new business, uh, is there a motion to approve the c- career contracts, uh, as presented?
I make a motion we approve the career contracts as presented.
And is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the career contracts, say, uh, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. The motion passes. Is there a motion to approve the probationary contracts?
I make a motion that we approve the proba- probationary contracts as presented.
And is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of, of approving the probationary contracts, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion passes. Is there a motion to approve the human resources report?
I make a motion to approve the human resources report.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And it, finally, is there a motion to approve the following contracts? We have two, two-year, uh, two, one two-year contract, Natalie Warren, who will go to San Lee Middle School. And we have a one-year provisional con- uh, one-year provisional contracts for three people, Melissa Brewer, who's an a- a- assistant principal at East Lee Middle School, Keisha Dur, who will be at San Lee Middle School, and Matthew McLean, who will be, uh, on a faculty at Ingram. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the contracts that you sent.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved, uh, moved and seconded. Uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes. And is there a motion for adjournment?
I make a motion we adjourn the Lee County School Board meeting.
And is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned.